Be the servants that we need to be in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen. Ohio County students, our schools provide students with skills, knowledge, and support to achieve excellence and become lifelong learners. All right, you have your agenda in front of you. At this time, if there's anything you want to pull off to discuss or something you want to add, now be the time. If not, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in fair. All right.
We do have a recognition tonight. You know, we actually talked about this young man last month. Where I told you how we had a young man finish runner-up in the state, the high school athletic association there, the state wrestling competition. And so we actually had him here with us tonight, and we want to recognize him. And he can probably tell you even more about this story, but I think when he made it to the final four, if you all recall last month, and when I was sharing this with you, he won that match because the other young man got disqualified by using an illegal move, I believe, which unfortunately injured Mr. Pottle, and therefore he wasn't exactly full strength when he went into the championship match. Or maybe we even may have a state champion if it wasn't for that. But nonetheless, what an accomplishment to finish state runner-up is an amazing feat. And we're so happy to have him with us here tonight. We also have his head coach, Coach Adam Lynch, sitting there in the back of the room, and we'll give him a chance to speak here in a moment. And share some facts and details about his wrestling program and some good things that he has going on. But before we do that, I want to bring Andrew up here. And we want to recognize him. Congratulations, Andrew, on finishing state runner-up. If you don't mind, we want to put your picture, if you don't mind, we're going to put it on Facebook later. And we want to give you this.
Can Andrew take his camera?
Absolutely, he can.
Your mic, okay. Do we want to get a picture?
Yeah, actually, you can carry it for a minute. Coach, you could come on up there. Mr. Asbury, you want to come up here?
Yeah.
We'll just all get in the picture here. We'll let you hold this. And we'll all get in the picture. And we'll put this one on Facebook. That way I can identify everybody.
Y'all can make him, not everyone come by?
They'll be smiling.
Guys smiling.
Y'all smiling. Andrew, for sure at the moment, would you want to say anything? You don't have to. I'm just giving you a chance. You're not going to speak? Well, you don't have to, yeah.
We're proud of you. It was an accomplishment. I think Mr. Asbury has, I heard him make the announcement that you're going to have your name or a picture or something that'll be hanging there in the lobby of OCHS that you'll be able to see for many years to come. So anytime you come in the building, you'll be able to see yourself up there on the wall. So congratulations, appreciate you. And I mentioned Coach Lynch is here with us tonight, so invite Coach to the floor if he wants to, or to stand up where you want to go. Just tell us a little bit about what's going on in Ohio County wrestling.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Adam Lynch. This is my first year as a head coach. I used to be a head coach at White School Trinity, but this is my own motto. I wrestled for here before I went to the Army. And I wrestled in college for a year and did lead, but I had a full ride to Lindsey Wilson. But long story short, our wrestling team, we're getting there. We're going to be a very tough team coming here soon. But Pottle really helped, you know, break that mold for us. We have thirty-six youth kids during, right now, during baseball season. You know, normally the season will be over in February, and we try to get in there before spring, you know, baseball and things like that hit off, so we can get those kids coming in. But we have thirty-six. I think that's pretty awesome. We're going to be building a program for years to come. I'm just, I'm thrilled to be back here. I love our kids. Every one of our kids are some of the best in the school. And we're going to build that criteria where we have better grades, better people, and better leaders. And hopefully, not only you all see it, but the other kids see it in the school. So, hey, I'm thankful for the opportunity to be the head coach here. I'm thankful to have kids like Andrew. You know, I've known him for years, even when I was coaching White School, and I used to mess with him because we had a kid that used to bully him a little bit on the wrestling mat, so it's nice to see him return the favor to everybody else. But hey, it wasn't hard. Thank you guys for all you do. And we're going to be a solid program here in a couple of years, if not this coming year. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Coach. Appreciate you. Thank you all for coming tonight. I appreciate that, and best of luck, Coach, as you continue to build this dynasty here we've got going on. We, of course, have several things left on our agenda. You all are welcome to stay, but anytime you all want to leave, feel free to leave. You will not hurt our feelings.
All right, do we have any questions to leave?
Fair enough.
Board members have anything? Enjoyed our class we had and getting to talk with the board members that were able to be there and our superintendent.
Can I say something, too?
Yeah.
First of all, I want to brag on the whole school system. This school year, as I know, has been very challenging because I have two kids at elementary school. The teachers have been just awesome, and you know, if there's ever a way that they could get a pat on the back. Because I mean, how many teachers, superintendents, principals have went through something like a pandemic? There's, I don't think there's ever been any. So, I just want to just tell the teachers and the principals and everybody that's here how much we appreciate them.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Yes, sir, as always. Believe it or not, there's five days of school left. This school year, as Mr. Gary just pointed out, it's been a unique one. Things have certainly been different with dealing with COVID and battling through and navigating this pandemic. But here we are. The year is wrapping up. Five more days. On Monday, which will be the twenty-fourth, the middle school will have their graduation ceremony at the Beaverdome Empath Theater at five-thirty. And then, of course, if you all are able, and I'll make sure who all's coming. On Thursday, the twenty-seventh, will be Ohio County's high school graduation at six PM there at Beaverdome Empath Theater. So if you'll let me know who all will be attending, we'll make sure Mr. Asbury knows that. That way he'll have seats for you up on the stage, that way you can participate in graduation. And if you need a ride, let me know. We'll meet here an hour or so before and then drive in if that's what works best for you. As Mr. Evans said, we did just have KSBA conference this past week. I know not everybody got to go. Some were unfortunately stuck on a beach in Florida. Sounds like a lot of torture.
Yeah.
But the rest of you that went, thank you for being able to go, and hopefully you were able to gain some more information, more knowledge that will help benefit the students here in Ohio County. As Jeff said, it was certainly good getting to spend some time with you all outside of this setting, where we could just talk and get to know one another a little better and actually eat dinner together. So certainly enjoyed that. What a school year it has been. But as was mentioned already, I think our staff has done a great job. They've persevered. They've continued to get creative and find ways to be effective. And the same can be said for our students. Whoever had a school year like this, where we're learning from home and then coming to school every other day, until finally we're getting back to at least normal school where we've been going now for several weeks, five days a week. But you know, we've asked them to stay socially distant when possible. They've done that. We've asked them to wear masks, and kudos to not just the adults, but our students. We have not had issues with individuals wearing masks. They all have complied. You know, sometimes you wonder about high school students, how will they take the mask? And they've been great. They've caused very little issues and problems. Everybody did whatever it took for us to be successful this school year, and it really meant a lot. And it means a lot. We appreciate all that hard work, the effort and the dedication. Of course, tonight on your consent agenda, I obviously won't go through every item, but a couple of things I just wanted to draw your attention to as you've reviewed that, is like in the end, you see how we're salvaging. Usually when we surplus buses, usually we bid some of those to see what they might bring, but I'm asking you tonight to go ahead and salvage those two buses. The reason for that, if you recall, is the Volkswagen settlement. If we salvaged two older buses, then they gave us basically forty-something thousand for each bus, and really we got a free bus out of the deal. So, but those buses can't be sold. They have to be salvaged. We have to show pictures of where we've cut the frame in half. We have to show pictures of where we actually have bore a hole into the block. So we have to show all of that in order to get that money. But it's well worth doing that because it was basically a free ninety thousand dollars for the district, which we've used to purchase an additional bus. So that's why you see that we're asking you to go ahead and straight salvage those. Also, you'll see that we're surplusing one of the lawnmowers. It's the one that we've had for a couple of years now. Long story short, it just really doesn't mow tight enough. It doesn't mow low enough on these Bermuda fields. And so I'm asking you tonight to surplus that. Then the item below it is we're trading it in to get a mower that's a reel mower, which has the blades. Instead of a rotary mower, it'll actually be able to cut very tight so that the soccer fields can be mowed tight, and then the football field can be mowed as tight as the coach wants it to be mowed. We can get the grass really low and tight. Those are just a couple of things that was not usually on our consent agenda that I wanted to bring your attention to and give you a brief explanation as to what they are tonight. And Mr. Chairman, that would conclude my opening comments.
All right, you've had an opportunity to look at your consent agenda. I need a motion and a second to approve.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion?
A second.
A second. All in fair. Motion, Carrie. All right, you've had an opportunity to look over your lengthy personnel report. At the time of year?
Yes, at that time of year, lots of changes. It is indeed lengthy.
We got pretty short for the last few months, but...
Yeah, the next two or three will be quite long.
Yeah. All right. Mr. Captain, Treasury report.
Okay, of course, this is for the month of April. We began the month with twenty-one million nine ninety-six five oh four fifty. Had total revenue of eight million three nineteen five sixty-one ninety-three. Total expenditures of four million five thirty-nine eight oh eight fifty-eight. Bring us to a general ledger balance at the end of the month of twenty-five million seven seventy-six two fifty-seven eighty-five. The investments were spared, had a market value of two million two forty-nine two seventy-two eighty-four, and a payout value of two million one seventy-five six sixty-three sixty-seven. On the bank side, we began the month with twenty-two million five forty-four one seventy-nine thirteen. Our seed allotment of a little over one point three million. We received the bond sale proceeds during the month of April. That was five million one twenty-three four seven sixty-five. That's related to the ATC renovation project. The food service reimbursement, two hundred and sixty-five thousand. Motor vehicle, one hundred and eighty-two thousand. Property tax, one hundred and eighteen thousand. State and federal grant reimbursement, seventy-five thousand eight thirty-one. And you see the smaller amounts listed. Total deposits and credits of seven point three million. The checks and other debits totaled three million nine fifty-four one thirteen nineteen. And less our outstanding checks brings us back to a reconciled balance of twenty-five million seven seventy-six two fifty-seven eighty-five. And you'll notice there is a little over nine million dollars difference versus last year, but of course, the bulk of that is bond proceeds. Not only the one that we got in April, but there's also funds that have not been expended yet from the bond sale we had in December. So this five million plus money that we transferred and the bond sale makes up almost all of that, nine point three million. So, does anybody have any questions about all of that?
What about that other two or three million dollars we're supposed to be getting through?
Put in another account?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion to approve the Treasury report?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion.
A second.
A second. All in fair. All right, two thousand twenty-two tentative budget.
As you may recall, back in January, we approved the draft budget for the two thousand twenty-two school year. And now we know a little bit more information, so we're asking you to approve the tentative budget tonight. One of the big differences between this budget and the one you see in January is that we add the estimates as we best know them for state and federal grants, our special revenue fund. So that information is still very preliminary at this point, but I'll point out a few things about that when we get to that point in the presentation. But if you'll just kind of follow along with me, I've given you the fiscal year 2020, that's last year's actual numbers, and then what I'm forecasting this year to look like in the middle column. And then, of course, what you're actually approving is in the last column for the tentative budget for next year. Right now, I'm projecting that we would start the year with about fourteen and a half million dollars in the general fund. And I've basically kept the tax revenues pretty flat for the year, not a lot of change in those. We won't get that information until we get the certification in the fall, and then we'll reduce that more in depth with the working budget at that point. The seed funds would be nineteen point two million dollars, and this is still working off of the two thousand nineteen ADA, as well as it reflects the kindergarten funding increase that was put in the state budget this time. Nine point three million for on-behalf payments. And you can see the smaller amounts listed. The total for current year, for the revenue for that year would be just under thirty-seven million. And then adding the beginning balance would be a total budget of fifty-one point four million. The expenditures, salary benefits. One of the things that we received with the ESER funds, as I'm sure you've probably heard us talk about that before, that there's, and I'll also show you a little bit about that when we talk about the grants. But there's a significant amount of dollars there that we're going to be able to utilize at least a little part of that to fund some of the salaries that would otherwise come out of the general fund. So the salary benefit numbers reflect those adjustments from those funds. There are also some things built into the purchase services, repairs, maintenance, equipment and so forth, that are just kind of, you know, if we had something bad happen with a roof or a bad maintenance issue that cost quite a bit, there are dollars built into the budget to cover those types of things that are, would be substantial. So that's one of the reasons why you see an increase in those dollars from the middle column to the column on the right in those couple of line items. The funds transfer out, that's a little bit of debt service. And that would assume the contingency then would be fifteen point nine million dollars. Let's see, I did put in, we could do either four or five buses next year, depending on how much we want to utilize the ESER funds to do that. Some of those, some of the buses incorporated into those numbers as well. Capital outlay, we would receive through the seed calculation, three hundred and eighty thousand four thirty-seven. And then the, that would be utilized for capital funds requests, which we do that each year early in the spring. And that would be used for some of those buses I mentioned earlier, as well as property insurance. The next section is the building fund. We would start the year with one hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine forty-five, carried forward from the current year. Property taxes, we would have to commit five hundred and seventy-five thousand of what is collected to the building fund, and then the state would send us revenue of one million one sixty-seven four hundred. The, of course, all of that except for sixty-three thousand would be utilized for debt service payments. And the food service fund, pretty much kept everything very similar to what a normal year would look like. Receipts were down this year, of course, as you would expect, given the less activity that we have in schools. And so you can see that the numbers kind of go down as far as a revenue standpoint, and then I've got the budget to go in back up a little bit next year. Then the expenditures are also very similar to what we have seen this year, and bumped up just a little bit in some areas. And then I've included some charts and graphs. This is just a breakdown of the total budget. Just a breakdown of the total budget showing the, just the scale of the general fund in comparison to the other funds of the district, over fifty-one point four million. Then the next largest would be the food service fund at five point one million, followed closely by special revenue fund of four point nine million. The next chart just shows you over the last, over the five-year pattern there as far as just the budget and how it increases each year a little bit, as you would expect just in a normal, normal activity. And those are basically, those are comparing the current tentative budget to the previous year's working budget. Then the next page just shows the general fund revenue, just that one primary fund. And the breakdown on the percentages, the composition of the revenue in that fund. Fifty-six percent in the green is the state sources. And then the twenty-eight percent is our beginning balance carry-forward amount, which is also a big part of that pie, and then followed by the local sources, which make up about fourteen percent of the budget. And then this shows you over the last, the two thousand twenty-two budget compared to the previous three working budgets, and how those have changed. As you would expect on the left-hand column here, that beginning balance, and it's from right to left in chronological order. So that has just grown steadily over the last few years. And then the state sources, as you will notice, we had some, as I was saying before about the seventeen GG money. Well, that, that's what's causing that last year of lift to surge because we've had that, had that to occur. Then the general fund expenditures, this just shows a breakdown, and of course, the two largest functions within the general fund would be instruction, which is thirty-seven percent, and administration for the district, which is thirty-two percent. And then a similar presentation of the comparison each year, just so you can see the fluctuation and changes in the particular functions that are listed across the bottom. The general fund's kind of sliced and diced in different manners to show you in different ways what those numbers are, so this just shows it in a function standpoint. Then the last page is, as I mentioned before, a listing of those special revenue grants. This includes local, state, and federal grants. The ones toward the top are primarily local, and then you go into the ones that start with a one in the front are all state. And then the threes, fours, and fives are all federal grants. And then, so we've got what we're budgeting in that first column versus the budget for the current year, and then any changes. And as you can see, there's not very many that either are changing or that we know about. A lot of them we don't know about yet. They've not been determined, and we've not been notified. The big one that sticks out here is the seventeen GG, which is kind of a one-time thing, as we've talked before. So that will, hopefully, will not repeat next year. And it was just really a movement of money from general fund to that state grant. So if you go on down to show that section. This is the new pocket of funding that we are receiving from federal government related to the coronavirus relief effort. And so as you can see, over on the right-hand side, that is the timeframes that these dollars must be spent within. So that will all be done over the course of the next, not only, it started this year and will progress through 2024. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much. I need a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-two tentative budget.
I'll make a motion.
A motion and a second. All in fair. All right, the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two salary schedule.
Yeah, next you have the next year's salary schedules. And as you can see, where I've typed in some of the information, the bottom line for everybody, it's at least a one percent raise. There are certain groups that we've addressed in a different manner. You know, over the time with a lot of the classified staff, we've looked at different groups each year. One group we haven't looked at was assistants, so that's why I proposed a two percent raise for them, but a one percent for everyone else. These raises would equate to the general fund, you know, roughly three hundred, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Somewhere in that ballpark is what it would increase our expenses by. But we just, as you just saw, we reviewed the budget. We certainly have that at this time, so it'd be my recommendation to approve this salary schedule this evening.
Well, the superintendent's recommendation, and they have motion to approve the salary schedule. We have a motion and a second. All in fair. Carrie. All right, we had a change order for soil stabilization for auxiliary June, probably.
This was something that two of you got to hear about at KSBA. One night after dinner, we were in the hotel lobby. We received some bad news last Friday. We knew this has been an issue. I talked with you all briefly about it before, where the auxiliary building is going to go. They're having a lot of issues getting that to pass compaction. Long story short, they disced it up, let it air out for a couple of days, they packed it back in and rolled it. It still will not pass compaction. The metal building, the steel building has not arrived yet, but they're hopeful that it will be coming sooner instead of later. But this soil is not going to pass without some additional work. So I know Kyle Abney had addressed with myself and... So, I know Kyle Abney had addressed with myself and Jeff and Beth that Friday evening that this is what's going to have to be done in order to get the ground ready, so that they can start on the building pad. So, the change order, if you look at the details, that was handed out to you tonight in a packet that you have in front of you, it is thirty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars. But it's something that if we don't do, your other option is digging out dirt and bringing in new dirt, and you're going to spend at least that, if not closer to fifty thousand. So, they felt like this was the most practical option, long, basically how it works, imagine an oversized tiller and dry cement, dry concrete. And they will till up the earth, this hopper will put in the dry cement, they'll continue disking and tilling until it works that cement in the ground, so that it will then pass compaction, and then they can start the building process. So, at this point in time, I don't think we have much choice. If we want to continue to move forward, we're going to have to do this soil stabilization. So, my recommendation would be to approve this change order.
All right, we have superintendent's recommendation, and I need a motion and a second to approve. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carried. All right, this is one of the back ones.
Yeah.
Create six elementary intervention teacher positions for Ohio County High School.
This is, this is a good thing. You know, in the past, when I first took over superintendent, we were able to create six literacy coaches that were reading recovery trained, and have been able to do some great things in our schools. Well, with these ESER funds that you heard Kathy mention, that we've talked about before, with ESER III, one of the criteria, a certain percentage of that money, has to be spent on intervention. In order to help achieve that goal, we need to get some intervention folks. So, this would allow each elementary school to get a new intervention teacher, to work with those students who are at risk, who are behind, to try to catch them up. And then also at the high school level, we've, unfortunately, have had students this year due to COVID, whether they were virtual or even the back and forth that we've had with school, their grades aren't where they need to be. So, we're certainly going to have to have an additional credit recovery lab in, in order to try to get students caught up and back on grade level. So, these funds, my recommendation would be to use these funds not only for those six elementary positions, but also that additional credit recovery teacher at OCHS, so that we can take care of those needs and vacancies. You mentioned, what about the middle school? Well, they already have two interventionists on their slot list. We would actually be able to use these funds to pay for those intervention slots this year, which would in turn save the general fund two more positions. So, it'd be my recommendation to create the approval of these six intervention positions, as well as the credit recovery position.
We have a motion. Any motion for, for Craig D. positions?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Carry. All right. Approve the SB twelve, or one twenty-eight request.
This is something that we've talked about bits and pieces for about three months now. You know, when Senate Bill one twenty-eight first come out, we didn't know enough about it, and we had to keep saying they're supposed to give us more information, more information. Well, finally, since our last meeting, they come out, when I say they, KDE, Department of Education, released guidance on what Senate Bill one twenty-eight would look like. And I've shared that with you all. One of the things is that if approved, students basically have to retake their school year. So, whatever, if they're a high school student, and they had classes A, B, and C, next year they have classes A, B, and C again, it's a redo, it's a do-over, is what this bill is called. And there's been much debate, positive, negative, pros for it, cons for it, back and forth. But I told you all, I'd let you know what all of our neighbors are doing. There have been a couple, few districts that have not approved it in the state. All of our neighbors, I actually met with all of our fellow superintendents today at a luncheon, and it is either already passed, or will be passed, by all the counties that touch us. That's Muenenberg, Butler, Grayson, Hancock, Davis County, which also includes Owensboro, McLean County, and then we're back to Muenenberg. So, all of those individuals, they've either passed it or are going to pass it. So, again, I know we've discussed a lot of pros and cons, but my recommendation to you this evening, we had sixteen individuals, all high school students, who signed up for Senate Bill one twenty-eight for those requests. My recommendation is that we approve those requests and the assurances document that KDE requires as well, and we move forward for next school year.
All right, we have a superintendent's recommendation, and I have a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All in. Motion, motion carried. All right, we have reason for closed session.
Yes, sir, we do. Personnel and possible litigation.
All right, then motion going closed session for KRS six one point eight one oh. We have a motion. All in favor? Motion carried, clear, now in closed session.